And with all nine board members present, we'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for being here. The moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Fugit tonight.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just one announcement. As this is our last regularly scheduled board meeting for 2017, on behalf of the board, I want to extend best wishes for a wonderful winter break to all of our students, staff, and families. Are there any elected officials in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to changes to the agenda. Just a reminder, board members, that as noted during our work session, the wording on item 7C-18 was correctly, was corrected to accurately reflect the amount and funding on the Maryup Knoxville Agreement for the Halls High School Academic Banquet, and item 8A has been withdrawn. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would like to move item, let me see if I can get in here to see this, E and replace, D and E. I would like to hear the proposal before we take any action on the agreement.
Okay. Do I have, Ms. Dethridge has made a motion. Do I have a second to that? Ms. Fugit's seconded. Any discussion, Mr. Norman? Your light's on? No? Okay, we have a motion to change the agenda, putting the proposal before the vote, and I just want to say that I find it unnecessary to change the order and will not support the change and vote to change the agenda requested by Ms. Dethridge. The two are not co-dependent. I believe that termination of the current agreement to be an emergency with a December 31st deadline and should be heard before the proposal. So I'm going to ask Mr. Dupler to give me his thoughts on that as well before we take a vote.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I would say that items 11D and E are not co-dependent, they're not, they're, I mean, in fact, independent of each other. Our office's recommendation to this board is that the, the current Leadership Academy Agreement is deficient, and the best way to, to correct that is to end it tonight. And, you know, that has no bearing whatsoever, our office has no position whatsoever on the merits of the Leadership Academy, and this board is fully free to decide if it wants to continue with Leadership Academy in any shape, form, or fashion. But, but the, but the memorandum of agreement, our office strongly recommends that it is terminated. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McMillan, your light is on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to concur with what the Law Director just said, and I believe that's consistent with what you said last month, was something to the effect that in the Law Department's opinion, there were questions about the legality of this agreement, and before you could create a new agreement, you had to make sure that this matter was resolved with whatever has occurred in the past. And I, I will not support changing it either. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights, we have a motion by Ms. Dethridge, seconded by Ms. Fugit, to change the agenda and move 11E before 11D, and so we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. McMillan. Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Hill? Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Fugit?
No.
Ms. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Dethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bowns?
No.
That's four, five no and four yes. Okay. Um, yes. Two. No, I'm sorry. Two yes and six no. Seven no. Seven no. I'm so sorry. Sorry. Okay, so the motion to change these two items on the agenda has failed, and we will so move to approve by Ms. Re, I'm sorry.
I've got, I've got one more change.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Norman.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, on that first contract for Millsaps-Gowan, I'd like to take personal privilege on that for a month. I'm just not comfortable with it yet, but I'd just like to take a month.
Okay. Mr. Dupler, is there any problem with that, as far as when it has to be done? Bye. I'm sorry, what, Mr. Dupler?
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was, I was reviewing the, the line item, and it does, it does have a term where it, where it purports to start January 1. That would, that would be the only difficulty that I see with, with what's presented. But, but this board could take it up in January and then, and then ask that the agreement extend from the time that the board takes it up, so.
Okay. Ms. Hill? Do we need a motion on this? Okay.
No, personal privilege. I, I certainly respect your need for personal privilege on this. A concern that I do have, and I guess this would be the Law Director then, with three other entities involved in this contract, and the fact that the next legislative session will actually start before we have a chance to review this again, do you have any feel for how that might impact, impact our, our board with, with this delay?
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Madam Chair, the, the way I'm reading the agreement, I mean, it's fairly short, I would think that if this board were to approve it, say at the January session, I would think that Millsaps-Gowan would probably be, you know, have the same, you know, fee and effort into it, so I would think that they would want the same fee regardless of whether it started, you know, January 1st or the middle of January, so.
Madam Chair, I'd just one thing to add. And first of all, my apologies to the Law Director for popping this on him right here last minute. I should have done that earlier. I think the contract also said that we're invoiced at the first of the month and payments due at the end of the month, so our January meeting would be prior to this payment being due, and we could, I, I think that could be done, and we would probably still fit with the contract.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go ahead and grant your personal privilege then to, I mean, grant your personal privilege. So, we're back to voting on the agenda, and Ms. Roundtree moved to approve. Do I have a second? Ms., thank you. So Ms. Horn seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of special recognitions tonight, two in fact, and Superintendent Thomas will share information on both of these outstanding educators. Superintendent Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. As you said, two special recognitions for staff this, this week and this month, so we're very proud of these recognitions. First, we want to recognize Sunny Poe, who's principal of Hardin Valley Elementary. Sunny joined Knox County Schools in 2004 as a teacher at AL Lotz Elementary and has taught at a variety of schools across the district. 2008, she became an assistant principal at Hardin Valley Elementary before serving as an assistant principal at Amherst Elementary. Dr. Poe has a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, a Master's of Science Degree in Education from the University of Tennessee Knoxville. She also has an Education Specialist Degree in Educational Administration and Supervision, and a doctoral degree in Executive Leadership conferred by Lincoln Memorial University. This year, Dr. Poe was recognized as one of Knoxville Business Journal's 11th Annual Class of 40 Under 40. This is a distinguished group that are recognized for making Knoxville and its surrounding areas and better communities, better communities through professional and philanthropic efforts. Sunny, we appreciate the work you do for Knox County Schools and the community. Please come forward as we congratulate you on being named to the 40 Under 40 Class of 2017. This evening, we also want to recognize Paula Franklin, a West High School teacher. She was among 45 honorees who will receive the National Milken Educator Award for 2017-18, and is one of two teachers selected in Tennessee this year. Mrs. Franklin is a graduate of the University of Tennessee, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science with minors in history and secondary education. In 2011, she earned a Master's of Science Degree in Teacher Education. Eighty-two percent of Mrs. Franklin's students passed the AP Government Exam with an average score of 3.59, which far exceeds the national average, and enrollment in her changing courses doubled since she took the course over at West High School. She sets high expectations and prompts students to learn on their own way while also delivering the necessary preparation tools to help them succeed. She also leads professional development sessions and mentors new teachers, serves as the prom advisor, and cheerleading coach. We're grateful for her work and thankful to have her educating students and teachers in Knox County Schools. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Franklin.
Okay, Ms. Cottney?
Consent agenda with exception of item 7C-1, which is deferred to January.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oh, is there any discussion? Did you have some? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-200, class size as amended.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on board policy A? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-210, textbook selection, distribution, and care as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-220, access to electronic media as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-231, duplicating copyrighted materials as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-242, community instructional resources as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approved second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy I-300, remediation and intervention services.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
8G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-340, promotion, retention, acceleration as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
8H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-350, repeating high school courses as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
8I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-373, graduating with honors or distinction as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
8J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-381, integration of TCAP scores and student grades as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
8K, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-441, wellness policy, physical activity as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
8L, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-450, public charter schools as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Item 8M was withdrawn. 9A, approved receipt of funds from a priority school state grant in the amount of $531,342 designated for Green Magnet Elementary, Lawnsdale Elementary, Sarah Moore Green Magnet Elementary, and Vine Middle Magnet Schools.
Motion made by Ms. Dethridge, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approved receipt of funds from an IDEA discretionary grant in the amount of $102,000 designated for a special education instructional coach, stipends for staff trainings, staff development, and support equipment.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approved donation of $20,000 from Kelsey Ballerini in the partnership with iHeart Radio and Academy of Country Music Awards designated for the Central High School Choral Program.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approved donation from Life Touch National School Studios in the amount of $16,000 designated for sponsorship of the Teacher of the Year banquet.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9E, approved donation of $10,000 from the Southeastern Conference through DonorsChoose.org designated for new classroom materials at Farragut High School.
Motion made by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9F, approved receipt of funds from Farmers Insurance for a Thank America's Teachers Grant in the amount of $2,500 for a string program at Beaumont Magnet Academy.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9G, approved receipt of funds from Farmers Insurance for a Thank America's Teachers Grant in the amount of $2,500 for a student television broadcast at Cedar Bluff Middle School.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
9H, approved receipt of funds from a Tennessee Foundation for Agriculture and the Classroom Grant in the amount of $500 designated for Southville Middle School's outdoor classroom.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see your light.
I just want to quickly point out, because we've got some students here from Hardin Valley Academy that are taking very diligent notes. I had spoken with their government class, and just want you to be sure that you put in your paper that we have already discussed all of these things fully at Monday night workshop, and also had policy review meetings, so the appearance may be to you that, that we are not doing due diligence, but for your information and for Ms. Guy's information, please tell her we are. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hill, for that clarification. That would be important to their paper. Okay, Ms.
Item 10A, approved contract with the University of Tennessee for provision of cultural competency training at an annual cost of approximately $170,000 for the term of January 1 through December 31, 2018, which may be extended for an additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fugit. Discussion, I saw Ms. Roundtree's slide first, and then we'll go to you, Mr. McMillan.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do, yes.
We do have, we do have some folks signed up for a public forum on this agenda item.
Okay.
So our first public speaker for this agenda item is Crystal Yamazaki, and as you're coming up, I just want to remind everyone that you're granted time to speak when your agenda item is being addressed, so please do. I know some folks signed up for multiple agenda items, so just as a reminder, not specifically to you, Ms. Yamazaki, but just in general for everyone. Thanks.
I only signed up for one, so I think we're good. My name is Crystal Yamazaki. My daughter's a second grader in Knox County Schools, and my son will be a kindergartner next fall. I am speaking tonight as a parent and as a representative of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign. The mission of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign is to help create safer and more supportive schools for LGBTQ youth in Knox County Schools. The UT Cultural Competency Training Program will be an invaluable tool to help us advance towards this goal and move forward as a community. Knox County Schools has a long way to go towards eliminating educational disparities and providing equitable educational opportunities to minority group students. Inadequate and discriminatory policies and practices, bias-fueled disparities in discipline, and hostile school climate all contribute to disparities in educational outcomes. and hostile school climate all contribute to disparities and educational outcomes. Students of color, students with disabilities, and LGBTQ students face disproportionately high rates of academic struggle, absenteeism, poor mental health outcomes, dropout, pushout, involvement in the juvenile and criminal justice systems, and diminished opportunities for their futures. Students with intersecting identities, trans students of color, for instance, are at an even greater risk of poor educational outcomes. Our children's education, well-being, and futures depend on our ability to create a culturally responsive and inclusive school environment. We're all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, ability, gender identity, and sexual orientation, have equitable access to all the benefits and opportunities offered in our schools. When I read the UT proposal, I was immediately and very thoroughly impressed. This program addresses issues of race, culture, ethnicity, religion, class, ability, gender identity, and sexual orientation. The program includes modules on hetero and cis normativity, anti-LGBTQ bias, and historical power structures that can contribute to the systemic oppression of the LGBTQ community. This program starts with an examination of implicit biases and works up to the development and implementation of culturally responsive and inclusive curriculum and pedagogy. It includes hands-on training and restorative teaching practices. Proposed activities take into account different occupational needs and learning styles. There is a framework for creating community-led growth and long-term sustainability of cultural competency. This is the training program we need to start effectively addressing the system-wide deficit in cultural competency among teachers and administrators. This is the program we need to begin doing the hard work of reducing and eliminating unjust and deleterious educational disparities among racial minority, disabled, and LGBTQ students in Knox County Schools. I know you have received multiple proposals for cultural competency training programs. I am grateful that the UT program is the one that you have chosen to advance to a vote. On behalf of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign, I encourage you to approve this contract. Thank you.
Our next speaker on this agenda item is John Butler. Reverend Butler, sorry, we're fixing the, we're fixing the timer since you wanted to, you're splitting your time.
That's okay.
Okay, we got it.
Is that okay? Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
I'm John Butler, 1324 Iroquois Street, Knoxville, Tennessee 37915. I'm also the president of the Knoxville Branch, NAACP. I served on the Disparities on Education Outcome Task Force, which this proposal came from and this board adopted, and also I've served on the DOE Steering Committee. So I just encourage the board to approve this contract.
That concludes public forum on this agenda item, but I did have my light on to speak, Madam Chair.
We'll go to Ms. Roundtree first, and then Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state for the record and let the board know that I plan to recuse myself from this vote. As a graduate assistant for the Theory and Practice in Teacher Education, I am paid as a graduate assistant in that department, so I feel that I should not vote on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no problem with the, with the program. I'm sure it will be a successful program. And as we discussed on Monday evening, I believe Ms. Massey told, told us that we would have an annual report.
Yes, sir.
Along those lines, since it, it does involve a rather large amount of money and a multi-year contract, I would simply like to offer an amendment that it comes back to the board for approval and that we get that report sometime prior to the renewal date for, for the board. Mr. Dupler, do you see any problem with that? Just a simple amendment, doing those two things?
No, Mr. McMillan, I mean, Mr. McMillan, ye- yes, that's fine. You can make a motion, and with a second and a, and a vote, that, that amendment can be added. As a matter of fact, you know, as a matter of course, most of these contracts are renewed through the superintendent and his office, but, but certainly by making a, making it explicit in the record, it would come back before the.
Well, I, I think it does two things. I think it, it draws attention to it and allows the board to, if we have to report prior to that, to see how successful it has been. So I, I would, I would like to offer that amendment if I can get a second to it.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Horn, all in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. So now we'll go back and vote on the actual contract that is before us. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of this, say aye, please. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 10B, approved contract with Life Safety Inspections LLC for provision of kitchen hood exhaust and fire suppression inspections up to $20,000 annually for the term of January 1 through December 31, 2018, which may be extended for an additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
May I recognize Ms. Massey at the podium?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Massey.
Thank you. I just wanted, for a point of clarification, we will be doing some training days this second semester, so I just want to be clear on the expectation that we'll vote again, just to make sure I get the timing correct, because I want, it'll be really critical that we be able to start in August, so some of those trainings may happen as late as May, but I could, is it okay that I, we've not completed all of the training, but maybe I did a report in April so that we can have a vote at either the June or July meeting so that we're ready to start in August? Does that make sense?
Fugit.
My question is, won't the contract start today? And, I mean, with this approval, so I would assume this contract would go January to January.
Okay.
Mr. Dupler, so, yeah.
You're correct, Ms. Fugit. I mean, the, yeah, the terms, January 1 through December 31 of 18, so, so you would have until the, the end of 18.
Sorry, I was just thinking school years.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Massey, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, where are we at? Where are we at?
Item 11A, approve fiscal year 2017 School Nutrition Fund Balance designation in the amount of $281,587.26.
Motion by Mr. Norman, do I have a second? Second, second by Ms. Hill, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
11B, approve additional fiscal year 2018 General Operating Fund Budgetary Appropriation for the Purpose of Allocating Resources to Gibbs Middle School and Hardin Valley Middle School.
Madam President.
Motion made by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Mr. Norman, any discussion? Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, and it's just a question. I know it's additional funding, is that going to be? That's for 2018 budget, so I guess if we use this amount of money for this, will it interfere with anything else, Mr. Sup-?
Mr. Snyder's coming up here to... Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Dethridge, can you repeat that one more time?
Well, I was just thinking, we're going to take about $400,000, $500,000 out of our budget for this, which was not allocated in the beginning. Would that affect what we're trying to do with the arrest, I mean, how would it affect it? I guess.
Right, so we, we had a conservative estimate on our BEP revenue. And so we realized actually an additional million dollars, and so this 489 request will come out of that, so it won't impact any of our other budget expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 11C, approve Charter Monitoring Report for Emold Academy.
Motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Dethridge, any discussion? Okay, seeing no lights on, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
11D, discussion and action regarding the Leadership Academy Memorandum of Agreement.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, do I have a second?
I, I have a question. What is the motion? This says discussion and possible action. Is the motion to terminate? I mean, I just, I mean, because the motion is discussion.
Just getting it on the floor so folks can speak to it.
But a motion usually is on an item that we're going to vote on.
Mr. Dupler.
I, I don't care one way or the other, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm voting for.
No, I, I mean, thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree, Ms. Fugit, I mean, there needs to be a, I believe this was, this was the line item for, for the work session, but at this point, you are correct, that there needs to be some type of a motion for an action, either for or against, yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to terminate.
Okay, and Mr. Norman has made a motion to terminate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McMillan has seconded. So the motion on the floor is to terminate the Leadership Academy Memorandum of Agreement. Ms. Roundtree has her light on. It's, oh, so we've got a motion and a second.
And we have public forum for this, for this item. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have multiple people signed up for this agenda item, so our first speaker for this specific item is Shelley McGill.
So it being two items, I don't know exactly which one I'm speaking to, but I'm speaking about the Leadership Academy. Okay, does that work?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, thank you for listening to and considering my thoughts. I'm Shelley McGill, I'm the proud principal of Pond Gap Elementary School, and I was also a fellow in the Leadership Academy Cohort Four. Being a part of the Leadership Academy was something that was important to me for a long time. I already had my master's degree in my EDS, so I wasn't going to be getting any sort of degree on, from the program, but I knew that there was something special about the academy that I needed to be a part of. It seemed very similar to the preparation that I had, the robust preparation that I had from the University of Tennessee when I was becoming a teacher. Through that program, I was able to spend four days in the classroom. Ms. Bounds was my liaison at that time, as I was an intern at Bricky MacLeod. I was able to spend four days in the classroom, and then the last day of the week, I went to classes, well, I don't remember which day it was, but I went to classes and was able to think, learn about theory and practice. I had, sorry, I had the opportunity to serve under a mentor teacher four days a week and go to classes one day a week where we would learn theory and reflect on our practice as a cohort. With that experience, I was able to make and learn from mistakes in a safe environment. That internship year was one of the best years of learning of my life. So of course, when I thought about becoming an administrator, I craved that same type of preparation and learning. I was blessed with the opportunity to become a fellow after having served as an assistant principal at Carter Elementary School for two years. I was so excited because I knew that I was embarking upon the best professional development that I could have in order to hone my craft. I knew that after I finished the academy, I would be able to be more effective in supporting teachers and in supporting students. I would be able to effect positive change in my school community and work toward my mission. And I was right. As a leader, I am continuously learning, reflecting, and improving my practice, but after the academy, I became a more confident leader. It is very easy in this position, in any position in education, to get bogged down with all of the minutia. But the Leadership Academy equips the fellows with the tools to be able to step back from a situation, see a bigger picture, and create a plan of action. Why would we want to stop that for our system? Yesterday, I had the privilege of hearing Dr. Candace McQueen speak. I'm almost out of time. I noticed that the university.
You have more time, the timer was messed up. Keep going, Miss McGill.
Thought I had talked that long.
We're trying to fix that.
That's all right.
There you go.
Okay, so yesterday I had the privilege of hearing Dr. Candace McQueen speak at the TPA Conference, Tennessee Principals Association Conference. She spoke about principal preparation, how important it is, and that it is a focus for the state. I noticed that on her slide, the University of Tennessee's Leadership Academy was listed among the top three leadership preparation programs in the state. And so afterward, I stopped her and talked to her about her thoughts about the academy. One of the things that she told me was that the Leadership Academy is held as an example of how partnerships between school districts and higher education institutions should be in order to improve student learning. Why would we walk away from that? How can we be a successful school system if we do not have a robust plan in place to build the capacity of our leaders? I encourage you to keep Knox County Schools in the fold of leadership development and continue a partnership with the University of Tennessee's Leadership Academy. Thank you.
Our next speaker on this item is Alicia Hinton. And I think we have the timer fixed now.
Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Thomas, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Alicia Hinton, and I currently serve proudly as the principal at Sequoia Elementary School. Prior to my placement at Sequoia, I served as assistant principal at AO Lots Elementary, as a third grade teacher at Bricky MacLeod Elementary, and a third and fourth grade teacher at New Hopewell Elementary. I like to say I've almost covered all sectors of Knox County Schools. I'm a proud graduate of Powell High School, where I completed grades K through 12 in the Powell feeder pattern. My parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents all benefited from education provided by the Knox County Schools. I tell you my personal background to emphasize the appreciation and the connectedness that I feel to the Knox County Schools. Teachers like my third grade teacher, Annie Hendricks, my middle and high school science teacher, Debbie Arnold, and my high school French teacher, Madame Sarah Lee Piccolo Taylor, all greatly impacted the mindset and the passion that I have for education. Each of these educators helped me to learn that I mattered, and they helped me to learn that I have a mindset that I can develop and grow throughout my education, that my journey as a learner and a leader was, and it continues to be, important. They also helped me to learn and understand that I have a voice, whether I'm a young third grader in Ms. Hendricks' classroom, or currently as a school principal. I'm a very proud graduate of the very first cohort of the Leadership Academy. During this unique professional learning opportunity, my knowledge and abilities grew in many areas. Having already completed a principal preparation and licensure program, I was unsure how the academy would benefit me. At the end of this very rigorous program, one in which is highly aligned with best practice and current research in the field of educational leadership, my abilities and understanding on how to implement educational change and support high-quality instruction in addition to developing teacher leaders was drastically, drastically improved and developed by the opportunities that I was given and afforded in the Leadership Academy. The benefits of Leadership Academy greatly overshadow other programs that are touting the same goals. The partnership with a major university, one that's a stakeholder in our own community, and the benefits of learning from practicing partners, many of who are, are, or who have served in the Knox County Schools, helped me gain a better understanding of the importance and opportunity within my role as a principal in the Knox County Schools. I believe several of our current school board members have served as classroom teachers, so you will understand the idea of experience-based learning in the classroom. The more time you spend in a given role, the more knowledge and expertise that you may gain. This is the same with the principalship. Those educational leaders who have served as principals throughout our district have a unique frame through which we look each day. Until you have walked in those shoes, it is only textbook-based knowledge. The Leadership Academy affords its fellows the unique opportunity to merge theory and practice. And for me, that was the greatest benefit of the academy. The collaboration with the University of Tennessee professors, who are experts in the theory of educational leadership, merged with the leaders, mentors, and current principals who are living and leading the day-to-day challenges of the principalship. There is no better train- There is no better training for the challenges a principal faces than merging theory and practice each day. I'd like to finish by saying that our own Knox County School strategic plan outlines the importance of this principal training program. Through Goal Two, with investment in our people, it places a focus in Objective Two on building and supporting our community of leaders. Our theme this year at Sequoia Elementary is entitled Clear Your Path. Our work with students, within the faculty and staff, and in partnership with parents is to strengthen our abilities to chart new pathways, especially when that pathway is new or very challenging. So today, I stand here in an effort to model, for my students and for my teachers, a way to use your voice in an encouraging and supportive way for things that are passioned to you. I'm thankful to have already received the benefits of the Leadership Academy. I've had my opportunity, so this evening, I'm speaking on behalf for those who will follow me in the role of the principal. The future leaders could and would greatly benefit from this continuing partnership, and for the students, faculties, and communities who could and would benefit from passionate and well-trained, knowledgeable school leaders. Thank you.
Next speaker is Quinique Moten.
Good afternoon. My name is Quinique Moten, I am a Knox County resident, Ms. Hill, I live in your district. Madam Chair, I want to thank you and the rest of the board for allowing me this opportunity to share my concerns regarding the principals, the Leadership Academy, excuse me. I come to you all as a parent, a single mother to a young man being raised in a city where he is part of the minority, in a school district where students like him often seem forgotten, where students like him can exist in this system for years before ever seeing a teacher that looks like him, and longer before he sees an administrator. Through pre-K kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade, my child never had a teacher or administrator of color. And this is not to discredit any teacher of color, however, we do know, based on research, that students of color perform, perform better when taught by teachers of color, and this has been the case for my son. But the teachers of color conversation is an entirely different agenda item for an entirely different day, but I must say that my son has been truly been blessed this year with two amazing African-American teachers, and two talented and caring African-American administrators, both of whom are Leadership Academy fellows. And more than anything, he has been profoundly impacted seeing a man of color lead in his building daily. As a parent, I've interacted with numerous administrators in this county, and I can recall my interactions with each of them. I can recall the seasoned administrator that didn't seem to have the best interest for parents or students at heart, only to his scores. I can recall the rookie administrator and Leadership Academy fellow that spent his personal time attending every back-to-school event in East Knoxville, getting to know parents, families, and our community. And the Leadership Academy may not have been the only difference between the two, but I like to think that it's a great start. I also come to you as a pragmatist, a pragmatist that realizes that teachers of color represent less than 7% of the total teacher population in this school system, that educates nearly 30% students of color. And while administrators make up 13% of our administrative pool, ending this system's connection to a program that is a reliable source for recruiting leaders of color will mitigate recruitment and retention efforts in a system that cites investing in leaders and eliminating systemic disparities based on race as the top priorities. I come to you as a professional, a professional that understands the importance of accountability. Working in the nonprofit world for nearly 10 years, I understand the importance of outcomes, data, and metrics, and I agree with your sentiments. There does need to be information provided based on the Leadership Academy, and I believe the board should amend the contract with the university specifying our requirements upfront, and if at that time, you don't receive what you're asking for, then it's time to begin this discussion. I come to you as a friend, a friend to dozens of teachers working in this school district, many of whom have long deserved an opportunity to lead, and some of whom have received it, but only through the Leadership Academy. And as you heard Monday night, some of whom will not have been able to afford it otherwise, because unfortunately, as we know, African-American households have a significantly lower income than that of our white counterparts, making these scholarships important for young, Black, and people of color aspiring educators, many of whom remain in classrooms where their leadership skills go untapped. I also come to you as a community member, a community member concerned with the training of our school leadership, especially in high-needs communities, where we don't see the same leadership for 10-plus years, where our students do not enjoy the luxury of consistency, where the superintendent's four-year commitment clause comes in handy because sadly, people do not stay in our community. I also realize our community is not a place where administrators should learn on the job. They should come in equipped with the knowledge of how to set up schedules, how to complete e-plans, and how to collaboratively lead our teachers, because doing your job, doing your job in an inner-city school is nearly, because doing your job while managing the demands of an inner-city school is nearly impossible, but learning how to do your job while managing one, it actually is. But most importantly, I come to you as a person, a person that's not always perfect, much like this program, an individual that's constantly taking a look at herself and hopefully making improvements day by day. I take a look at my areas for improvement and I make changes, I don't cut skills out of my repertoire. One of those skills, being solution-oriented, because while I find that it's easy to point out issues, it takes the most work to find solutions. So as an imperfect parent and an imperfect professional rolled into an imperfect person living in an imperfect community, I ask that you take a look at this imperfect program and we revamp it. But please don't discontinue the relationship with the Leadership Academy. Let's work as a community to make it better, so students like my son in this district will continue to have administrators and teachers who look like him to look up to as he continues through Knox County schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Hopson.
Lauren Hopson, Knox County. The issue of the Leadership Academy can be convoluted in a number of ways. One can make the case that we need it to train our administrators so we can fill vacant positions. However, we have way more applicants than we can place, and our very own Dr. Rodney Russell is probably more qualified than any of us to train administrators. We could say that the issue is about recruiting minority administrators, an issue that interestingly only surfaced once the program was in jeopardy. However, the majority of minority administrators were already in our system, we didn't recruit them. I also have to add that our former interim superintendent, who has attempted to rally support around the racial issue, was not too interested in helping to retain a minority teacher that I worked with last year. The story of her situation is, is that her husband was being transferred, and so she turned in her resignation shortly before Christmas break. A day later, a personal situation arose which necessitated the fact that she needed to stay here, and she asked her principal to rescind her resignation, which her principal refused to do, even though she had good evaluations. I talked several times with HR and with her interim superintendent about trying to place her in a permanent position come January. I talked to them several times. She is still, to this day, a substitute. So we weren't too interested in retaining a minority teacher last year, I don't know why all of a sudden we're worried about it. Clearly, that's not the real issue. What it really boils down to is a matter of trust. We apparently have a partnership with the University of Tennessee to help train administrative candidates. However, we, or more specifically, Ms. Owen, has had a great deal of trouble getting requested information from them, at least until she was on the receiving end of a document dump just a few days ago. Not nearly long enough to go through all that stuff before tonight's meeting. We all know, or should know, what a document dump means. It means you either didn't have the requested information, which is problematic, or you would desperately like to hide it. Do we trust that they are making good decisions about applicants? We have been told that they seek the best and brightest candidates. If so, how can a Tennessee Teacher of the Year finalist not even get an interview? And sadly, I would love to give some credit to the commissioner's appraisal of the Leadership Academy, but after all the debacle with our testing and the misinformation and the untruths that have been told, I can't give that any credence at all. And then, we have the issue of our former superintendent. A superintendent that ordered the sending of conference of concern letters to many teachers who have since been recognized as school-level teachers of the year. Between slush funds, illegal grants, unnecessary buyouts, unapproved research studies, and failure, failure to deal with documented bus issues, and failure to fulfill pay agreements with teachers, how is it possible that we could still be okay with this man having any part of training our school system's leadership? Any counselor worth their salt will tell you that you can't have a healthy relationship with someone you can't trust. So the only question really is, do we trust this man to continue to have influence over our school system or not? Can we trust you to end this nightmare or not? Nine years is more than long enough, don't you think?
Butler, Reverend Butler, are you still here? Oh, there you are. You moved, okay. You get that other half of your time now, sir. Okay. That's her, I wasn't, I wasn't running the timer, so we'll see if we can get it adjusted. Before you start, we're gonna adjust the timer.
I doubt if I'd take four minutes.
There you go, yep.
John Butler, Knox County. The reason why I doubt if I'd take four minutes because, quite honestly, it seems like your mind is already made up. And I've seen that very often when I come to a public meeting. You say you have a public forum, but you already have your mind made up. Doesn't matter what the public says, you're gonna make your decision the way you formed it before you came here. That's hypocritical. It's also hypocritical to say you want to have excellent administrators and not provide a program for them. I trust this board is sincere when you say there's something wrong with the contract. You have your attorney saying that, I trust that, because he's not just your attorney, but he's my attorney too. So I trust that, but what I also trust is, is that you realize you have to have a program that's gonna prepare excellent administrators. I also agree that this program wasn't put in place to recruit or develop African-American administrators. It may have been something that has happened because 75% of African-American administrators who are now placed came to the program, but I would believe that any program that you develop should be intentional about having excellent administrators and should also have a result of diversity. You shouldn't have to create a program to promote Black folk, because Black folk are capable of being administrators through any program you develop. So, we're not here at the NWAACP to argue about this program, we've already sent you a letter how we feel about it and the questions we have about it, so, but we do believe you have to have a program to develop them. So while I say, okay, I trust you enough to know that the contract got problems, you need to fix it, we'll fix it, but make sure we have a program that we can, that's gonna give us the success we have, and also that you're gonna evaluate in less than nine years, that you don't have just 60 days to make a decision about whether you're gonna keep a program. And then also keep the public informed of how this program is doing, so that you're not killing the program and the public really don't know why. We still, as much as I trust you, you know, one, one of the politicians, presidents, that we quote a lot, he said, "Trust and verify." Some of you all know who I'm talking about. Tonight, all I can do is trust, because I don't have any verification, because you haven't given us any. And that's what I think the public deserves, is transparency. We need to know what's going on. And the other thing I think is, if you're gonna have a public forum, have one that when we come and we share with you, you're going to be listening and not already have your mind made up. Now, if I have judged you harshly, I do apologize, because I know the Bible says, "Judge you not, and ye shall be judged." And I'm, and I'm late for Bible study, so I'm gonna stop right now.
That concludes the public forum speakers for that agenda item, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody that came to speak to that tonight. We have a motion to, made by Mr. Norman and seconded by Mr. McMillan, and so now the board will entertain any discussion, and Ms. Roundtree had her light on for a long time, so Ms. Roundtree, you may go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to state on the record and clarify, since I had recused myself from a vote earlier regarding the same college at UT, that this program takes place in a totally separate department within the college, I'm not affiliated with that department anyway, in any way, shape, or form, and so I do plan to vote on this item this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think most of the comments that I made or plan to make have been made already, and that is the value of this program and value of the Leadership Academy. In reading the termination letter, it says the MOU is in question, is passed due for routine review by the board, and this board is considering a replacement or revised contract and our program that is best suited for the board and in Knox County schools. Which means that you plan to terminate a contract with the University of Tennessee before we even start on doing a revision or starting on coming up with some type of program to replace it. Every district or every, in Knox County, has benefited from the Leadership Academy. Every one of us sitting at this table has benefited from a Leadership Academy fellow. And like the lady said, it's easy to terminate, but it's harder to try to come up with some solutions. I think we need to come up with some solutions on how we can make changes to the MOU, but not to terminate it, because it's very valuable and it has produced a lot of, of qualified, better experienced, better administrators ready to take on and move forward with the school system. We have benefited, and I, I just really plead with this board to take that into consideration for we decide to terminate a MOU with UT Knoxville just because of the individual. We are, it's about the individual. Even Ms. Hopson said, it was, mentioned the individual, and while we shouldn't continue to work with him, we're not working with him, we're working with UT, he just happens to be the person that's administering the program. But the program is so valuable, and some, and the gentleman said on Monday, he, he said it very eloquently, if it hadn't been for this program, he wouldn't be where he is today. And because of the experience he got from working with mentors and all the things, he's very passionate about it. And we need to take into consideration what they, the Leadership Academy fellows have said. They have sent us emails, they have contacted us, they have told us the value, they have told us the benefit of it, and we still trying to figure out how to terminate. I, I really think we need to consider what's best for Knox County and Knox, Knox best, what's for a person or vendetta, or whatever you want to call it, it doesn't matter to me, but it's just that we need to get over that and move on with what's best for the children of Knox County, because that's what it's, this, this is what we're all about, the business of educating children, not worrying about how we're gonna terminate a good contract just because we got personal problems or issues or don't like what, like you said, if we don't get the information, let's just work with UT and make sure that we get a little bit more transparent information, data, or whatever we need, but I really don't plan to terminate a program without having something ready to go and moving forward so that we can continue the relationship that we still built.
Thank you, is there any more discussion on this item? Okay, I'm sorry, I saw Ms. Fugit first, I had my head directed this way, I'm not sure. So Ms. Fugit, Ms. Hill, and then Ms. Owen, is that okay with you? Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was, I just want to say, that is why I supported Ms. Dethridge's motion to move the discussion forward. I want to continue a relationship with the University of Tennessee. It doesn't have to be the exact one we've had, and it's hard for me to vote to discontinue something if I don't know that we are committed to putting something else in place. So I will not, I'm not saying that the, that the way the program is set up with UT is perfect right now, but I cannot vote to terminate that unless I know that we have agreed to the proposal that our superintendent created for us that basically addresses every concern that we told him we had, which was money, we didn't want to pay for any more people, we wanted to take it out of our assistant principal pool. His proposal addressed everything the board has control over. What we do not have control over is who the University of Tennessee hires. We just don't. And so, I will not be supporting discontinuing this agreement, because I, again, if they were flipped, and I knew we were gonna accept the superintendent's recommendation, then I could vote to end this contract, but I- then I could vote to end this contract, but I can't do that until I know we're willing to work with them.
Okay, Ms. Hill.
When we talk about terminating an agreement and perhaps developing another one, that assumes that we have two willing parties. I'm wondering if there's anyone here from UT that could speak to this, the fact that I have a lot of the same concerns that Ms. Fugate mentioned. I agree that there were some real problems with the program, absolutely, there were. I also think that we've come a long way in these last few weeks of addressing many of those problems and rectifying it so that it can be a new agreement that we could all be proud of. So, I guess I don't know if.
I don't see anyone from UT here.
Yes, I'd be happy to hear what Mr. Thomas has to say on that. I mean.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Ms. Hill. I can't speak for the University of Tennessee, but I have spoken with Betty Sue Sparks and with Dr. McIntyre in terms of the agreement. There's a willingness on the part, so they've told me of the University of Tennessee to work with us on the proposal. So, I think we've, we can take that from the standpoint of their word that it's, that they will work with us on these recommendations that we're making to this proposal.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Thomas. Ms. Owen.
I think the fact that there's no one here from UT while we're discussing this says quite a lot about our partnership. I think it says more than anything else any of us have said. I'd like to share some numbers. I know I've given you a lot, I'm going to give you some more numbers.
Ms. Owen, can I ask you a speaker?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're such a soft voice.
I'm very rarely accused of being too soft. In 2009, 2010, we had 322 administrators in Knox County schools. In 2015, 16, that was 399. So, each year, we're seeing a very steady increase in our number of administrators while at the same time, we are seeing our ratio of teachers to students going the other direction. And that's a pretty large concern, that we are seeing our ratio of administrator to student go up while our ratio of teachers to students are going down. Looking at other solutions, we have a tuition assistance program. We've had it for a very long time. Right now, we have $46,000 in that tuition assistance program. Last year, at the end of the year, $34,000 of it was unused. So, folks aren't applying for the tuition assistance that's available, it's there. So, that money problem, that's something that could definitely help with that problem, and it's not being utilized. Leadership Academy fellows have said that they would not have become administrators otherwise. But looking at the 81 who were from Knox County schools, we had three who were already working toward their doctorate when they were accepted to the Leadership Academy. We had one who was actually teaching college-level education classes at South College when she was accepted to the Leadership Academy. We had 33 who already had an administrative license prior to the Leadership Academy. However, we also had three who had less than two years professional teaching experience. 65 of those 81 fellows had master's degrees prior to going to Leadership Academy. 20 already had an education specialist degree. So, we're not actually looking at folks who needed the degree or needed the certification. Many of them already had those. Several of them had multiple degrees and certifications. So, I think there's really a large question there about the real intent of the program, especially when we have some of the people who it actually listed in their bios when they were accepted, that they had extensive leadership experience, extensive administrative experience. Why are we taking people with extensive administrative experience into a beginning training program? That makes absolutely no sense. And that one of them was teaching college-level education classes is unfathomable. The last thing I would like to do is clarify something I said on Monday. I think there was some confusion based on an email that I received. I was not questioning the amount of time our fellows spend out of their buildings away from their administrative duties. We already know that they are out every Friday all day to attend class. That's not part of the information we are missing. That's one of the very few pieces we actually have. In this more than a year that we've been trying to get this information, when we've asked UT for financial information regarding the expenditures for staff for the Leadership Academy, one of the things that they gave us was a spreadsheet that was titled, "Leadership Academy Salaries." And when I got that sheet, I just happened to already have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Thomas the next day. We sat down to look at that sheet, and it looked like some of our people were making an exorbitant amount of money on Fridays, and it looked like we had dozens of administrators out of central office on Fridays. And I think it's fair to say that Mr. Thomas and I were very concerned. And as he looked at the sheet, because we had just gotten it, he said, "Well, that person never taught at the Leadership Academy. That person never taught at the Leadership Academy." The list that UT gave us was not our staff who had taught at the Leadership Academy, it was our staff who had taught at UT at all. If they taught summer school, if they taught night classes. So, all of this was lumped into one big sum and given to us as if it was the salary of people teaching in Leadership Academy. So, we have all kinds of data like that that we've been given that makes it look like one thing when it's completely different. And there's no breakdown, there's no way to tell, and they're not giving us information. When we have a partner who will not tell us about our partnership, when we have a partner who is keeping information from us, that is not a healthy relationship. And that's not a relationship to stay in. This is not a relationship that, that is something that can just be, you know, gently fixed with a new contract. It needs a lot more than that. And I think we need to seriously step back and look at what we expect from a partner because I don't think this is healthy at all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to go back to, I know we've already talked about this quite a bit, but just to remind everyone and on the record again, that by the actual research and data that was provided, there were marginal positive benefits to Leadership Academy. And if anybody else has ever had to suffer through stats, you probably remember that correlation does not imply causation. And so, the assertion that the Leadership Academy directly impacted the marginal gains in academic outcomes, I just, I find that questionable. And I think we probably, the Board received some similar emails. And looking through all the data that we've been provided and gathered, I just went through and picked out, it was interesting, a specific person said in their email, they felt that they would not have been in an administrative position had it not been for Leadership Academy. I found that interesting, so I did a little more digging. The person had already completed a master's degree in ed. leadership, yet they had never actually applied for an administrative position, but they had applied for Leadership Academy numerous times before being accepted. And they felt that that experience is what allowed them to get into a principalship position. So, I think there is some concern about the quote, "pipeline," and we have, and the numerous numbers that Ms. Owen ran through, the number of administrators that we have that has increased, and then the folks we already have within the system that have that licensure already in place. And I guess the last thing I want to go back to with the research that was conducted by our own department, is that the survey results specifically stated mentorship by the principals as the most impactful factor. I mean, I love UT, I'm all about, I'm all about theory, I, you know, I love that, and I think it is important, and I agree with Alicia, she was, I don't know if she's still out there, about the theory and practice being there. But by the, by the data that we've been given and by the comments from the fellows, 87% of the fellows filled out that survey, the majority specifically referenced mentorship by their principal. So, I think we're just, we're missing something here. If we're just, if we just want to throw that out and totally not look at that piece, I think, I think that's a concern, but I hope that we've all gone back and looked at that research and that information.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a big vote. This is big. It's big for this system. I think it's highly symbolic of a direction that, that we're going to take and that the Board wishes for this system to take. First of all, I want to compliment the Board for taking up the cause because at the very least, with the revisions that we see and so on, we just saved Knox County taxpayers $900,000. Now, tell me when that happened? We just did that, at the very least. Now, we've criticized, you know, those of us that are on my side, obviously, I'm going to, I'm going to vote to terminate and to change the direction of the principal preparation. I think there will be a program. I don't think 60 days is enough time to formulate it, although I do appreciate Mr. Thomas and his redesign and the various things. There's certainly some very good things in there, and those things will be portion, a portion of the new program, I think. It's really hard to justify $6.7 million that we spent thus far on a program that can show virtually no academic gain. I think that's the basic criticism. I noticed that how few, how few teachers can come and speak what they really feel about their principals or assistant principals, but, but I, but I also realize that probably most all of the schools have a Leadership Academy principal or assistant principal in the school, therefore, they are directly affected by that and their performance, their evaluations, you know, hopefully, there's not a bias, but we know there would be. So, I think there's also some, the systems in this state have, and what we do gives direction or at least information to how our state performs. I'm, in terms of academics, I'm sort of tired of composite ACT scores of 21 being characterized as exemplary or whatever. I think we're mediocre at best in terms of academic performance. And I really think that this millstone around our necks called T-VAS is directly associated to leadership and leadership preparation and the direction that our state is taking. So, I think this is an important vote. I think it's time for us to focus on students and teachers in the classroom and not data.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Ms. Dethridge, did you have something else you wanted to add before we?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thank you. Listen to the comments. I agree with a lot of this being said. We have increased administrators, and we also have increased students by almost 70,000 students, 7,000 students. So, with the new mandates and new things coming down for our administrators in our classrooms, they have now decided that it's best to have more assistant principals in the building to help the principals because it's been so hard and difficult to do all the things that's been requested, and it's challenging. So, yeah, I agree, there is more administrators because of what's been asked for our administrators to do in the building. I also agree with Ms. Roundtree. She said that a lot of them are talking about the mentorship, and that was what I was going to say. It's more than just theory, it's about all the experience they're getting working with administrator. There is more than, than just going to class, there's actually applying it, working inside the building, learning from their mentors. So, it is more than that. And when we say that, that it's not really helping academically, if you ask, a lot of the, I guess they say, the better administrators in the building now have been a Leadership Fellows, you know, Leadership Academy Fellows. And that's all across the district. When they say, "How are your class and how do you like what's going on in the building?" They say, "It's excellent. I see it getting better and better and better." Everything's not going to turn on a dime. It's going to take time, but the administrators in the building have been making a great advancement and make great strategies and different things in the building. And that is coming from the experience that's through Leadership Academy and the, and the fellows that's coming through there and the people that's been put in place throughout Knox County. And most of them have said that because of that, they feel more satisfied with what's going on in the building because of the experience, the challenge, the, how they handle things, how they handling all the things that's coming down from central office. And so, that's not, that's not a fluke. That's because the program is working. And it is an important decision that we have to make today. It may, and I know it's not going to take 60 days or whatever, but I've heard the superintendent say that UT has agreed to make changes. They have agreed to work with us to make sure that we get what we need from them and that we make the necessary changes to this agreement in order to benefit us as and what we're trying to achieve. So, I still say it's not good to terminate anything with Knox, with the UT Knoxville at this time. I think we need to look at it and be serious about trying to make sure that we have experienced leadership in our building all across Knox County.
Did you have something to add to the discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Drummond, following up on the tuition assistance, what's the maximum an employee could get in a year in tuition assistance? $2,400?
Okay, and I assume that a graduate degree costs more than $2,400, so I, so it is definitely gonna, I appreciate Ms. Owen pointing that out, and I do think our, I would like to ask our employees to avail themselves of that money, but let's not kid ourselves, $2,400 is not going to pay for a graduate degree. I absolutely think that we can improve this. Here's my concern, folks. If we kill, if we walk away from this agreement and then we do not say that we want to work with UT to continue a program, we're walking away from 10 to 12 scholarships for our employees. That's the bottom line. That's it. We are the, we are a partner because we were first to the table, and we're the only system that gets scholarships. That's my concern. We talk about professional development. Take it all away. If we don't tonight, and I can, I mean, everybody can see the tea leaves, we're probably going to vote to discontinue this agreement. I am begging this Board to then vote to authorize Superintendent Thomas to go right to UT tomorrow and start working out a plan because if they think we're walking away, those scholarships are lost to us forever. are lost to us forever. I mean, it's like a divorce. If you divorce and then you want to reconcile, there's still damage to the relationship. And that's, and I just ask that we be very mindful of that, because we're the only people that get that, and I do not want to give up ten or twelve scholarships that no other school system gets.
Okay. Mr. McMillan, and then I'm going to address the Board and...
I just want to call for the questions.
Well, I'd like to address the Board first.
That would be fine, but I, I'll explain it at the end of the discussion, and I think everybody knows how they're gonna vote.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Hill will not entertain your light on, because he's called for the question and you've had a talk. Anyway, everybody's had a chance to speak, and I would like to just add to this and then we'll take the vote. It is with a very heavy heart that I will cast my vote. I faced many difficult votes in the past three years, but this vote perhaps is one of the most difficult, and as with every vote, I have studied, listened, and learned and voted accordingly. This Board has faced enormous amount of pressure from high places of influence in multiple arenas. I know this program has benefited those like myself that wanted and needed an opportunity to grow and serve without the expense of more education and additional time out of the work week, especially for those with young children. I know that those who've helped develop the program for future administrators have done so with a sincere heart, believing they were helping our students, administrators, District and State. But the Leadership Academy, in my opinion, should have been vetted and reorganized years ago by those who had the power to do so. I don't believe anything would have changed without this Board bringing this up for a discussion and a vote, and that, to me, is very unfortunate. So, we have a motion on the floor to terminate the Leadership Academy made by Mr. Norman and seconded by Mr. McMillan. A vote of yes is to terminate, a vote of no is to continue, and we will take a roll call vote starting in District One.
Wait, Madam Chair, would you read state to...
Oh, okay. The motion made by Mr. Norman was to terminate the leader...
No, state, what the, what the vote, a no vote constitutes what?
A vote of yes is to terminate and a vote of no is to continue the Leadership Academy. Is that correct, Mr. Deuper? So, a vote of yes is to terminate, a vote of no is to continue the academy, because the motion made by Mr. Norman was to terminate the Leadership Academy. Is that...
I guess, but I, that wasn't what I understood you to say originally.
Oh.
A yes vote is a vote to terminate, a no vote is to continue. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, I'm sorry.
We're square on that, okay, Ms...
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is that to terminate in its current form?
Yes.
In its current form? Correct?
Yes.
Memorandum.
Mr. Deuper.
And another point of clarification, this letter, the way it's worded, if we approve the next item on the agenda, then the wording of this letter is not, would not be appropriate. So, if you can address that, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Horn, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with both those statements. I mean, right now, you're about to vote on, on Item 11D. That 11E still remains, and I've heard a lot of comments here recently, just now, that, that, that pertain more to 11E. So, so that, that item is still to come. And, and Ms. Horn, you're correct, if, if this Board votes in favor of 11E, then, then the letter to, to the, to the Dean at UT can, can certainly be, be amended accordingly.
So, without any further questions or clarifying, we'll start with a roll call vote in District One with Ms. Dethridge.
No.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Fugit?
No.
Ms. Horn?
To terminate in the current form, yes.
Ms. Hill?
Horn stated to terminate in the current form, is that what we're voting?
That's what we're voting.
Yes.
Memorandum.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
Yes.
That's seven yes votes and two no votes.
So, the motion carries, and does the Board desire to have a recess at this time? I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan?
In light of what just transpired, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would move to table ten E, or, excuse me, 11E, the next item.
Okay. Mr. McMillan has made a motion to table 11E, so do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. So, we will open the floor up to discussion. This is to terminate 11E, was that the wording? What was, to table?
Not, not terminate, to table.
I'm sorry. A 11E. A preschool teacher and me got the Ts. Okay, so to table 11E. So, discussion opened on the floor for that. Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The vote that I just made was based on a trust that Reverend Butler talked about, our ability to be able to trust each other. Tony, you stated it's one of the biggest votes that, that we have made probably to date, and I certainly concur with that. My vote was made on the hope that I could trust that this Board would continue to the next item, so that we can, in fact, look at this proposal that Mr. Thomas has spent time on, that in fact, corrects all of the, or most of the issues, I would say, that have been brought up, that caused the termination of the Leadership Academy in the first place. You know, what's passed is passed. The money has been spent. You know, it doesn't matter if we agree or don't agree with T-VAS. At that point, all of this is, is past, it's behind us. While if we do not have an agreement with this tonight and settle this and let one of the biggest universities in this country go because of, of items that we don't agree with, I just think that will make us look as a board as, I hate to say, probably close to incompetent. I think this would just be unconscionable to allow this partnership with UT to get away from us because of disagreements.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen. Okay. Terry, do you know whose lights went on first, 'cause I was...
Ms. who?
Ms. Owen.
Ms. Owen, thank you.
I think it's very unfair to characterize the possibility of tabling this as a lack of trust or as somehow going against a trust that has never been stated. We also have the trust of our community, and I believe our community trusts us to make the best possible plan that we can make. And so, if, if this plan looks very incomplete or like something that needs more time, then I think we owe it to the community to take that time to put together something that we could actually use, that might actually be in the best interests of our students. I, I don't think we want to be hasty with it, because I think that's what got us here to begin with.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Dethridge now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is exactly why I wanted to reverse it. I knew this was gonna happen. And a lot of people took a vote because we thought we were gonna be able to discuss it and talk about it and vote on it, and I feel, I feel like Ms., Ms. Hill. It is a factor of, of thinking that we were gonna be able to discuss and move forward on a proposal, and now you're gonna table it. So, I agree with her in that this is exactly the reason I wanted to reverse it.
Okay, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that our, our superintendent has put time into her proposal that I would like to hear more about, I would like to have discussed in a public forum, and so I would like to be able to do that this evening. We've put him in a position to advise us on his position, and I would like to give him the opportunity to, to voice that this evening. Thank you.
And clarification with the Law Director, he said we would have to vote on tabling it first, and then we can come back to the discussion. So, we had a motion made by Mr. McMillan to table 11E. We had a second by Mr. Norman, and if there's no other discussion, then we will take a vote on whether or not to table this 11E, so...
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
If we table, does that take it off of the agenda or would public, I mean, this is a Wednesday meeting, so it wouldn't stop public forum on this issue, correct?
Public, I mean, public forum under your, under your Board policy, you know, would, would continue, because it's Wednesday meetings, I mean, it's on any topic, but the effect of a table would be, it would take it off the agenda for this evening, and then it would need to be placed back on the agenda by, by a Board member at a, at a subsequent meeting.
Right. Would not change public forum, correct?
That's correct. It would not change public forum, no.
So, to clarify, the motion was made to table, so a vote of yes would be to table it and take it off the agenda, a vote of no would be to leave it on the agenda and discuss it tonight. So, we'll start over in Mr. McMillan's district, if there's no other lights on or any other discussion, so...
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Fugit?
No.
Ms. Roundtree? Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Ms. Dethridge?
No.
Ms. Bounds?
No.
That's two yes and seven no votes to table it.
So, the motion to table this has failed, if that is correct, and we will move back. Does this Board wish, I'm sorry?
No, that's what I was gonna, no, I was gonna make a motion or request, ask if we were a recess, if the Board is amenable.
This Board will recess and take a recess and reconvene to discuss 11E at six fifty? Does that sound right? But you need to be back in your seats at six fifty.
Uh-huh.
Okay.[1397.15] Okay. Okay, it is 6:51, and I want to call this board back from recess. The next item is item 11E, and I would like to make a motion to hold a discussion on the superintendent's proposal and direct the superintendent to name a committee to enter into a discussion with the University of Tennessee, and that that committee will include at least one board member. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owen, so we will open the floor up to the discussion on this motion. Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds, will you explain to me exactly what your thought process on that? Because, so, if I understand the motion correctly, you are making a motion that we begin discussion...
On the superintendent's proposal.
And that you are directing him to begin a discussion with whom?
No, that he will name a committee to enter into a discussion with the University of Tennessee, and that that committee will include at least one board member.
Is there a timeframe on which he must do that?
Not in this motion.
Would you be open to a friendly amendment?
What is that friendly amendment, Ms. Fugit?
Sooner rather than later, like within the next 30 days, that he name a committee to begin the discussion. My fear is that the longer we let this go, the less likely we are to keep our scholarships.
I think that's realistic, that it would take place, but I would like to get Superintendent Thomas's timeframe on that. Do you think that is doable to name a committee that would enter into a discussion with UT within 30 days?
Um...
Given...
Yes. Let me just say, of course, with the holidays, that takes a little bit of time.
Yes, that is. So maybe not 30 days, maybe by...
May I clarify that? All I'm asking is for him to name a committee by the time we meet in January. That surely can be done regardless of the school holidays.
Right, okay.
Yes, I mean, I could, we can name the committee.
I would be agreeable to that friendly amendment, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was very friendly. Okay.
Yes, very friendly.
Ms. Hill?
Just a question.
What?
If this, if the decision is made to continue the academy in whatever form this board decides on, at what point, Mr. Thomas, do we put at risk the scholarships?
Again, I think that would be, since those scholarships come from the university, that would be a question I think we would have to ask them.
I will say, Ms. Hill, from my experience, that that deadline has been extended in the past for whatever reasons. They didn't have enough applicants, or they wanted a bigger pool to choose from. So just remembering when I was in the classroom and got those emails, they extended that deadline in the past, so I don't know. I'm sorry, Ms...
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is the typical timeframe on applications that prospective fellows must have applications in by a certain date for the next cohort? When does that typically take place?
I believe, starting in the month of January is when they take the applications. I don't think the final decision's made. There's an interview process, selection process. I don't know the cutoff date. I don't know, Dr. Raiswick, if you are aware, or, Dr. Drummond, if you're aware of the cutoff date for the application process.
Yes, sir. It should be approximately in February, and we will start the interviews in... Last year, we started the interviews in mid, late February.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, what's the rationale of making sure, since this superintendent doesn't delegate this to the superintendent and his staff to come up with this MOU, what's the rationale for having a board member on it?
What's the rationale? I just think for a board member to be represented and to hear it firsthand, and to be a part or present at those negotiations.
Because they have to come back through the board before we have to...
It does have to come back, I realize that, but...
Okay, so, we don't necessarily have to have one, it's just that you would like to have one. So that we can be represented and at the table when they're discussing it, in case we have questions.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's well put, to be a part of that, and to be able, if you had questions, to be represented. Ms. Hill?
In theory, I have no problem with this at all, except that when you ask for one board member, and it's pretty clear the division on this board, that could in fact impact the negotiation process. I just wonder if you've given any thought to that.
I have, and I'm not opposed to having more board members on that team. If that's, you feel like that's something you want to do, then we could make a friendly amendment number two.
Well, and I don't know that that's necessarily the answer either. It's really more a matter of just for discussion perhaps on this board. I do understand when we get two board members, we get into sunshining, and scheduling becomes... Not that there's anything wrong with sunshining, but that scheduling often becomes a huge issue.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. May I?
Oh, certainly, Mr. Deuper, yes, of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since Ms. Hill was discussing sunshining, it's going to be the Law Director's position that if this motion is successful, that because this will be a negotiating committee, and at least one or more board members will be on it, even if there's just one board member, it will need to be sunshine.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate this attempt to, I don't know what the attempt is, maybe to postpone action somewhat on it. We are divided, but I think we were placed in office to make decisions, and this is a tough decision. I think it needs to be made. I think the people of Knox County have clearly spoken, certainly the teachers and the people of Knox County have clearly spoken to me about the leadership of the Leadership Academy, and that's the one revision that is not even considered. He's gotta go. He's gotta go. And unless we do that, unless I do that, unless I vote to do that, I am not doing my job, and I want to do that, and I know that's my job.
Thank you, Ms. Owen.
I'd like some clarification regarding the motion. Is the motion for the committee to develop a plan for us to discuss at a later time, or is the committee, is this an assumption that we accept the proposal and then the committee begins discussion? I'm unclear as to what the role of the committee will be.
I think the original motion was that the committee would enter into a discussion with the University of Tennessee. If you would like to make a substitute motion or amend that emotion to just be a committee that comes up, I felt like we would be discussing the superintendent's proposal tonight and make any corrections to that, but...
Okay, so that committee would be dependent on what we do with E. Is that correct?
Mr. Deuper, I think the way the motion was originally done was with the intent that, given the division of the board, that the... But we might need to, I could withdraw that, and we could make, you know, I can withdraw that. No, we haven't. I can withdraw that if you, you know, if the board's will is that they feel like that we are, need to separate these two items out as to voting on the proposal, the super... The way it was on the thing was a discussion and possible action on the Leadership Academy proposal. So we can separate those two out, or we can just vote on, up or down, on whether we want to direct the superintendent to enter in with the University of Tennessee. This motion probably was leading or led, you know, to go ahead and discuss. It will still come back before the board as to whether we accept UT's terms and whether they accept our terms. So it would have to come back before the board. Does that make sense? Like, if we began the discussion with the university through the superintendent's committee, and we began that discussion, it would still have to come back to the board? Is that correct, Mr. Deuper? Or am I misstating that?
Okay, so, yes, I think the last question was, I mean, would some type of agreement have to come back before the full board? That's, the answer is yes. And, Madam Chair, you had talked about withdrawing, but I don't think you've withdrawn it. I think, I think your current motion, and we may want to make sure that it's properly seconded, but your current motion is to appoint the committee and then open up discussions. I think the only thing you need to clarify is, do you want the committee to start with the proposal or something different? Thank you.
So that comes back to me as clarifying the proposal? I'm sorry.
Well, I think you can, I think you can further discuss it. I think that's the question that Ms. Owen raised, if you want to further discuss that, and then you can, then you can further amend the motion, should you so choose.
Okay. Ms. Fugit?
May I take an attempt at what I think is on the floor with my friendly amendment, which was that we would, I believe the motion is to create a committee within the next 30 days that would, that would require the superintendent to put that committee together to begin discussion on moving forward with a proposal or negotiations with the University of Tennessee. I think that's for the Leadership Academy. I think that's all that's out there. What we want him to negotiate about, we haven't decided yet. Is that... I mean, my presumption would be, his proposal would be a good starting point, because that's what he, that's his recommendation to us. But I think the motion is just to create a committee to start the discussion. Is that what you intended?
Yes, but we could just, this is very... If the board chooses, it's the, well, the board, if the board wants to continue that, or we could just... Help me out here, Mr. Deuper.
Well, I think...
Because I'm not real sure what the...
I think, I think, I think Ms. Fugit has stated it correctly, except you did state that you wanted one or more board members on the committee, so I don't, I don't know that Ms. Fugit said that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Okay. And if, and I think Ms. Owen had seconded the motion, but that was prior to the friendly amendment, so if Ms. Owen or someone, okay, Ms. Owen's indicating that she still supports her second, so that motion is properly before this board at this time. There's a motion and a second. If you all want to add anything about the parameters of the proposal, then that is yet to be discussed.
Okay, Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. I just want to say, all I hope to accomplish tonight is that we send a signal to the University of Tennessee that we still would like to have a discussion with them on how to approve, improve the Leadership Academy, notwithstanding Mr. Norman's assertion that until a change in personnel is made, he can't support any type of partnership with the Leadership Academy. I'm not sure that everyone on the board feels that way. So I would like us to show the university that we would like to still work with them to improve the Leadership Academy that meets our school district's needs. The Leadership Academy doesn't need us. They're growing. Academy doesn't need us. They're growing, they've got plenty of people that want to be a part of the Leadership Academy. I just want it to work for us and that we don't lose the scholarships.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna make a comment on what Ms. Fugit just said about the, the academy growing. I find it remarkable that if it involves anybody besides Knox County, that it took until last year, I think there was one person from another, another district in it last year, and that was the, what, sixth year in operation. And I think there were, we heard testimony from Ms. Sparks or somebody last month, maybe the month before, I'm not sure when, that there were a couple of people from Upper East Tennessee, from Kingsport, and, but if it's such a huge success, and, and all these people think that, these other superintendents in other, in other districts think it's such a success, why has it only been limited to, I mean, why, why have people from outside of Knox County not been in it until now?
I suspect, I suspect because it's, they have to pay full tuition. They don't have the scholarships, so their school board has to come up with the money, or the individual has to, for the tuition. That is supposition.
I, I, I don't know that either, but, you know, for sure, but it, it makes me wonder how much merit that other districts actually give to the program. And we heard, somebody stated earlier, we heard that it was in the presentation that we had, you know, about the marginal benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any discussion that we have had about UT is pure, purely conjecture. It's all guesswork. We don't know what they're gonna do. We do not know how they'll react to anything that we do. Certainly, any kind of proposal that we, we would make, we could offer the same thing to, to them, and have a complete redesign of this program, and have the redesign done with our priorities and our values in mind. And that's, that's what I'm proposing. I, I think definitely, we get rid of this thing, we get rid of it as it is, it will be reformed in a much better way that suits and serves us in our community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, and that has been done. We have gotten rid of the O M U, so that's done. So what we're now discussing is the proposal that the superintendent had, well, we're proposing a committee that's on the floor, we're talking about forming a committee, but still, we have a proposal that has been presented to us by the superintendent. We need to either like it, dislike it, and that's where the starting point's gonna be. And as far as other people, I know lady, people in Johnson City and Kingsport and everybody else is waiting for us to drop out, because they do want it. It has been something that they have our, I've, I've talked to them at the T S B A. They want it. So, let's just say that we don't want it the way it is, but there are people that do want it.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, so, I will just say that I appreciate Ms. Fugit asking the superintendent for a proposal. I appreciate the superintendent, his staff drafting a proposal, and the pro, proposal does address, as Mr. Norman said, many, or someone said, many of the concerns that this board has identified, such as negligible data, which we know that our former superintendent loved, and yet UT hasn't provided any, and shoddy accounting at best. This board should have been provided information over the past eight years willingly. Freedom of information requests should never have been necessary, and I really appreciate all of our board members who have fought to gather this information. And with this proposal, I believe Knox County Schools and the school board has done our due diligence. I'm disappointed that UT is not represented tonight, but, you know, we've done what we can do, but it's been a very one-sided discussion tonight, and no matter how well-meaning it is. So if there's no other discussion, we will take a vote on the, do you want me to read that again, with the friendly amendment? Mr. Dupler, help me out if I get it wrong. Motion to hold a discussion on the superintendent's proposal and direct the superintendent to name a committee to enter in a discussion with the University of Tennessee, and that that committee will include at least one board member and will be formed within the next thirty days. Does that sound right to everyone on the board, Mr. Dupler? Okay, so there was a motion made, and there was a second by Ms. Owen. So, if there's no other discussion, then we'll take a vote. A vote of yes will be to support this motion, a vote of no will be a vote against this motion, and basically, it will cover the superintendent's proposal and any changes that he and his committee decide to make to it. So, I don't care which side we go to this time. You want to start with, we started this way last time, maybe Ms. Dethridge this time?
Ms. Dethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Fugit? Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill? Ms. Bowns?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Roundtree?
Yes.
That's seven yes and two no.
Okay, so the motion carries, and we are now at public forum.
Public forum, the rest of public forum, okay. Our first public forum speaker is Harper Smith.
I'm sorry, hold on.
A point of clarification, I think.
Yes, Ms. Hill?
Did the motion state that you, you made the motion to discuss it and then to form a committee?
Yes, I, yes.
So, we- Well, she just called for public forum.
Oh, well.
We can-
Sorry, no, we've, these are the regular public forum speakers. Sorry, Ms. Bowns.
Are we discussing this tonight, or not?
As far as the proposal that the superintendent brought forth, that was what the motion included, was a discussion.
Oops, sorry. I was, I was eager on public forum. I apologize, Harper.
Thank you, thank you.
You've been very patient. Okay, so I guess if you want to discuss, let's go.
Okay.
Okay, well, seeing no other lights on.
Ms. Hill, this was not for the discussion by the committee. Mr. Dupler was asked, we were clarifying that over here. The motion to discuss tonight was in regard to eleven A, to discuss it as a board, what the superintendent had on his proposal.
Yes.
Okay, that's the way you understood it?
Yes.
Okay.
But then I heard Ms. Roundtree call for public forum.
She prayed again. I was, I was over eager with our-
Okay, so we are going to discuss it.
Thinking about Reverend Butler's comment, we want to hear from the public, so, that was my air, but I did have my light on, I, to discuss about this.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Okay, I just want to, in, in looking at this, I do want to just thank Superintendent Thomas for taking the time and the staff to put this together. I guess I'm still in reading the program highlights. I still have some concerns about the marginal impact of the curriculum that's being offered, given the data from the actual fellows and the comments they made. So, I guess my comment to the superintendent and/or whoever the committee discussants are going to be, is that I think we need to look closely at whatever this curriculum is, because overwhelmingly, if you read each of the individual responses, they continually tied back to the mentorship piece with their principal. And I think the other part that that speaks to in the data is the fact that a number of these folks, let me go back to Ms. Owen's, let's, while I'm finding this, I'm just gonna give her a shout out for being an Excel wizard, that twenty of these folks already had an E D S, sixty-five of them already had a master's degree, thirty-three already had an administrative license. So I think that what that speaks to, to me, is that these folks were experiencing some duplication in what they were being taught in their coursework. So, perhaps something we need to look at is guiding folks that may not already have numerous certifications or additional coursework above a bachelor's or master's already, because the data overwhelmingly showed that the mentorship piece with the head principal was the most important. And I do just want to add while I'm on that topic, I know several of our own staff teach at UT night courses and/or as guest co-instructors with the Leadership Academy, and that's certainly not to detract from the quality of their instruction. I think it's just something that very much should be considered when the respondents have said, the coursework was not a huge part of why they thought it was important. So, I'll just wrap that up. And if you haven't read the responses, I encourage you to do so.
Okay, thank you. We had Ms. Horn and then Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I concur that the mentorship piece I keep hearing about is so important, and the other piece that I think that we need to keep in mind as we're re-establishing this program, is the other key thing that I've heard is the access to the, our K C S leadership, and getting to know those folks and being able to, how important that relationship has been. So I think that's key. And also, I think that, you know, we've talked a lot about the past tonight. I think when, in looking forward, in thinking about the type of principals that we, that we would ideally like to see in each of our schools, and having that as, using that criteria in the selection process, so that those who are admitted to whatever principal, to the Leadership Academy, Principal Preparation Program, is key. I think that's extremely important, and I think that, that's why the, I appreciated Mr. McMillan's question on Monday night regarding who would make up that, that selection committee, because I think that's key, and I think that's where it begins. It's, we obviously want to make sure that we have the type of person in those positions that match the qualities and characteristics that you're looking for to create that culture of change. So I think we need to keep those things in mind as we're re, re-establishing this program. Thank you.
Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. I just want to say, Superintendent Thomas, I appreciate all the conversations you and I have had about how we can make this better. I, I will say, I, I'm hearing a lot of what we're talking about, about curriculum and people having certifications and that sort of thing, although what I think a leadership, what I would like to see the Leadership Academy focus on is leadership, because many people have the same credentials. Their CPAs with the same credentials, but only one's the managing partner. There are, there, my hairdresser has the same license, but she manages the salon. So there's something about leadership that I think is very different than academic coursework about pedagogy and all those words that you, education people use, that I now know what they mean as a business major. But I think that's the piece that I really want us to focus on, because building level leadership is critical to a successful school. That's why, before I was on the board, way back, the board decided they wanted a Principal Preparation Program to talk about leadership and the qualities that are required into today's fast-changing, overly legislated academic environment that we find ourselves in. I am a big proponent, and I would say this again, I wish that we would look at adding mid-career principals to the Leadership Academy, so that you don't just have to be a brand-new principal, but perhaps you've been a building principal for twenty years and it's continuing education, professional development. Many people who lead organizations get continuing education on improving their leadership skills. So that is something that I wish we would really focus on, which would differentiate some of the concerns I think I hear from a lot of education professionals, that it's the same degree, it's the same coursework. It, it needs to be about leadership, human resource management, how to deal with your staff, how to deal with people that aren't like you. All those things that make people a great leader is what I'd really like us to focus on. Thank you.
And, Ms. Dethridge, I'll come to you in just a minute. Superintendent Thomas, one of the things that you had in your proposal, which I think is very important, and I would just state on the record, if the, we enter into a partnership with UT again, is the high-priority schools. And I think that's very key, and I think that is one of your three pieces of your initiative, and that is to, you know, work on that disparity gap, and I think that's one way to do it. So I think there needs to be a willingness on the part, and somewhere in that rubric that either we have or we develop, that they're willing to work when they get out of the Leadership Academy in a high-priority school. And they really, and UT focuses their classwork on that as well. So, that's just what I would like to see if it goes forward. And, Ms. Dethridge?
Madam Chair, and I do agree with what you just said. I also want to make sure that as part of this committee and part of what we're trying to do and what's in here is, actually talk to the, you've had a lot of, I guess, fellows that have had their bachelors and masters, but at the same time, E D S, and when I talked to them, they said this is still different. The curriculum was hard. Curriculum identified those things that you need to be an effective leader in a school building. So when we're trying to come up with what it is they need to know, be sure we engage and talk to those that have been through that, what worked, what they felt like benefited them in the building, dealing with classrooms, students, environment, finance, you, all that. So, like I do, I do agree with what you, what's been said, but I think the best way to find out exactly what, how to improve a program is to go to tho, go to those that's been through it, and find out what they feel like we need to do in order to make it better. I know you've done some of that, and I'm not saying you haven't, because I'm sure you did when you was putting this together, but to, to address some of the concerns the board has, I think that would be a great start, so that we make sure we touch our bases, because we can sit here and say we won't, but that doesn't mean that's what is necessary and needed. So, they're the ones that's been through it, and I think that's where we need to make sure we have that conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Hill, can I ask you a question? You had a question for Superintendent Thomas the other night about limiting it to A Ps and to principals, and with your permission, or, I guess, we don't have to have your permission, but I too shared some of that concern, and so I would just like for Superintendent Thomas to kind of address that, if he would.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I, I think the, the question was in terms of teachers, who would be selected, I guess, to go. We had put in the proposal that we would select from administrative, for our A As, I guess, and our, and assistant principals. Of course, those folks that are in those positions come from teacher leadership at the school level, so actually, when you look at the folks we have that are in those positions, they, they have been teachers and teacher leaders. So, if the board, you know, what we were trying to avoid is the additional cost, I guess, of replacing. So, if, if, if someone comes directly from the classroom into the program, then obviously, we're gonna have to replace that, that teacher. So, we were just looking at eliminating costs. But every year, we've moved people into A P jobs and A A jobs that come out of those teacher ranks. So it would be, I think, conceivable, from the standpoint of, I'm a teacher one year, I get, I get promoted to A A or A P that next year, and possibly selected to go through the, the program. So that, that would be one way. Now, if you want, want us to consider teacher applicants, then that's fine, is just know that we, we need to put a proposal together that covers the cost of replacing, you know, that teacher. And some of the concern there too, you know, again, before a principal becomes a principal, And some of the concern there too, you know, again, before a principal becomes a principal, they serve some time as an assistant principal in most situations. So to put a teacher with the principal for the principal to mentor that teacher just to be a principal, it loses some of the steps in between going from teacher to principal. So it's almost like, and I've talked to some folks who've been mentors for folks that had came right out of the classroom and the other concern was, hey, they don't even understand what the AP does. So how am I expected to train them to do what I do when they don't even know what the AP does? So, and again, I'm not saying we can't work within the framework that the board wants us to work with, but that's something we need to take into consideration. And like I say too, you could come from the classroom directly to an AA, AP, apply for Leadership Academy and be selected. You know, again, let me just say too, I have three priorities, three priorities, that's all I have. Increase student achievement, build a positive culture, and eliminate disparities in this school district. You know, it's easily said, it's more difficult done, but it takes instructional leaders, it takes principals with all kinds of training, everything that we can give to them to go out there in that school and make some movement in those three areas. And if we keep this program, I want to be sure that we are selecting people that have the experience, that they've shown some evidence that they can increase student achievement in their classroom, in their school. I want us, and a good point about leadership, you know, this board put me through and put Dale Lynch through a pretty rigorous process. And I don't know what all you found, I haven't gotten any feedback on that, so maybe you don't like anything I'm doing. Some days I feel like I make a difference and some days I feel like, what in the world am I doing? Fortunately, I work with great folks and a great team who help me and support me and prop me up and have the same goals that I have. So I guess what I'm saying about that, yeah, it's definitely important to put people in this program that have those leadership skills and abilities and we may have to spend some money. I know the board spent some money trying to find out about me and whether I have any leadership abilities. And, you know, again, tell me afterwards, you can tell me publicly, Bob, you don't. You know, I understand, I told you when I took this job, I said, hey, if I can't do it, I will gladly turn it over to the next person, you know, and if y'all are not happy with me, hey, you know, I understand that. And I'm not trying to use any threats towards anybody, I'm just saying, I have three goals and three priorities for this school district and every school in this district and every child that is in school in this district. And so, you know, I guess I'm getting off base, but I just want this Leadership Academy to, we select people that have proven that they can do that in terms of building those positive relationships, you know, this, there have been, I guess there's been harm done, I suppose. I mean, I know teachers have come to this board and talked about the way they feel like they've been treated and, you know, I believe in treating everyone like I want to be treated, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a custodian, or whether you're a security officer, bookkeeper, or a school nutrition employee, or a school board member, thank you. So again, that's what's important to me, you know, and that's what I want to see this program do if we're going to continue it. And it all goes back to the selection process. And, you know, what we have tried to do is do the best with what we were given. You know, I heard the concerns, we heard the concerns about the program, about the cost, okay, we're going to take care of that. We've heard concerns about the selection process, we feel like, okay, we've taken care. And I think there can be improvements made in the selection process because, Ms. Horn, I think you're exactly right. You know, if you don't have those leadership skills, I'm not sure we can take you and instill those skills. If you've already got them, maybe we can improve upon them, but I'm not sure if you don't have them, we can do a whole lot of good there. So I think that's extremely important and what we need to look at first, I guess, first and foremost. But I think in order for this school district to move forward, we've got to establish the relationships and it's back to what I said in the interview process, I mean, our teachers, they've got to care about their kids, they've got to form those positive relationships with their kids, they've got, the principals have got to do the same thing, they've got to form those positive relationships with their teachers, their students, their parents. Us, we've got to form those positive relationships, we have to model the behavior. So, and Ms. Dethridge is right, you know, I wish we could turn it on a dime, you know, I wish, you know, when ACT rolls around, every student in this district would make a 36. I guess those test scores would get thrown out too, but that every student would have 100% attendance, make a 36 on the ACT, go to college, Harvard, Yale, wherever they want to go, go be a welder, just do whatever they want to do. So, and I'm getting way off topic here, so I've had a lot of these things built up in me, so give me, so give me the platform. So, so anyway, having said all that, we will do the very best we can at the board allows us to move forward with this partnership. And, you know, you put me in this position, I think, for me to express my opinion and do the very best job that I can do. And if you'll give me the tools to do that, you know, I'll certainly try to do that. I'll shut up.
Thanks, Bob.
I was just going to say to Superintendent Thomas, you have said quietly for months and months that you've been superintendent and not interjected on this board and you don't know how much that is appreciated, so I didn't really care how long you went on tonight. I felt like you had earned it. So anyway, Ms. Roundtree is next and then we'll go to Ms. Horn and Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly comment on a part of the proposal that you just talked about, Superintendent Thomas, in that the comprehensive and collaborative selection process, while I do appreciate that it is noted that no Knox County candidate will be admitted without the consent of the district, I think there is some, as you mentioned, room for improvement there because if the goal is that we are trying to find candidates that are going to be successful in a high-need school, I feel like the district itself is going to know that probably better than someone from UT will because the district, depending who is on the selection committee, I feel like Knox County is going to have a better idea of the student and community and family needs of that school versus someone that is in the center at UT. I think they're going to be much more removed from that process. So I certainly don't want to tie the hands and not allow UT to be a discussant or part of the selection process. But I do think, given your three key points and the second point about high needs and then their expertise in curriculum and instruction, I think that really, I believe it should be weighted more heavily towards the district in making the decision of which candidates would be the best for any sort of leadership program. So that's all I had to add.
Okay, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Thomas, I do appreciate the passion and we've had long conversations about the importance of leadership and I believe we spoke about what Ms. Roundtree was just talking about, that it is important that Knox County Schools has the, is the ones who are making that selection and that if you submit those candidates to the university and they meet the specifications of the university, that they should be accepted as presented. So I think that's important. And then as you, many of you know, I'm definitely a proponent of character assessments and strengths and weaknesses and I, we don't have to spend money on that the way we did in the superintendent search, there are ways to do that that are free of charge, but I am all for doing that and I think that you can gain a lot of insight from those kinds of strength assessments and especially when it's relative to, as Ms. Roundtree said, our high-need schools and the needs that we're specifically in search of. Thank you.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Bob, for everything that you said. One thing that I would appreciate, you looking at as far as the candidates being willing or going to high-need schools, I certainly think that that is important. I have them in my own district. I think we need to be a little bit cautious though because the majority of our schools are not high-need schools and several of our districts have huge, huge elementary, middle, and high schools that need strong, strong leaders. And so I would not want them to be penalized because we're, because we are putting exclusively our candidates in these schools.
That's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Ms. Dethridge.
And I promise I'll be short and be done. But listening, listening to you, Mr. Superintendent, I do agree and I agree with Ms. Hill, what she just said because I was thinking, we need transformational principals and I have great principals from the Leadership Academy in my high-need schools. They are doing a great job and I think that the same is what Rem Butler said, we need them everywhere, not just in high-needs but all over Knox County schools. So I do agree with what you just said. And right now, without anybody leaving or anybody moving or retiring, I think I have some great ones that's already come through the Leadership Academy that's doing a great job. They just need to be there long enough to make those transitions and make those, but yeah, we need great transitional principals all over Knox County and I do agree with you. And as far as you being quiet, some people might appreciate it, but I'd like for you to speak up a little bit more about, because I think this, you are our employee and you are running this school for us and we need to hear from you more often. So don't hold it in, let us have it.
Thank you. Superintendent Thomas, I had a question because one of the failings that I saw, in my opinion, with the academy was that the fellow was placed in a school and that principal invested all of that time and effort in training them in that school and then they were put in a position at a different school the next year. So would having them come out of the AP ranks kind of take care of that in a sense? Is that what you foresee? So they would go into the Leadership Academy but they would still remain an AP at that school and probably remain at that school the next year to benefit that? I mean, not that they have to, but I just, it was like fruit basket turnover and I understand the importance of getting experiences at multiple schools, but I know that our principals were investing a lot of time and then they are moved to a different, they were always pretty much moved, I'm not saying, so how do, what do you see as far as that, as far as how, was your redesign that would work?
Of course, it would have to have a vacancy if the AP served as a, you know, a role with mentor and there was not a vacancy at that school, I'm assuming there would be because we're saying there's no cost, but if there's, if this person could be promoted, if it's an opportunity to be promoted to another school, then, you know, we would let them interview and then if they're selected, be promoted. But short of that, I know there have been times, I think, when we have wanted a person to get some different experiences and back to your point, we've moved them from a different school, moved them to a different school. But I guess what, I think Ms. Dethridge said too, you know, consistency, you need consistency in teaching staff, you need consistency in the administrative leadership. And short of a promotion, it's not, it's not my intent to take people and necessarily move them, you know, away from a school or move them all over the district. So I want, I want us this year to look at, and we've already talked to staff about that, if we've got people doing good jobs, let's leave them where they are and let them continue to do a good job and build that consistency. So I guess to answer your question, not saying that we wouldn't promote them, obviously I think we would if they're our best and brightest, but short of that, then yes, stay in the position and be in waiting for a principalship.
Well, I just know I heard from a lot of educators the frustration of trying to, especially a school where they had a great mentor and they got a fellow every year, but that person's really acting as an AP. So that staff has to get used to that AP and then they're gone and then we've got another one. So I'm not saying tie our hands in any way, but I just want your thoughts on that and I do appreciate the consistency. Okay, we have Ms. Owen with her light on.
I'd just like some clarification for the community mostly about what differentiates an assistant administrator from an assistant principal, so we can be a little clearer on those steps.
Superintendent Thomas.
The AA versus the AP, basically the biggest difference is pay. I mean, in terms of, the AP does a job, gets a supplement for doing it, the AA does the job and they do it at the same pay. They may, I think they do have a little bit lengthier contract than a teacher contract, but that's not, that's been a fairly recent practice. Over time, we've not done a lot of that. It got down to, I guess, over the last few years from a budget perspective to say, hey, we need an additional assistant principal and instead of having money to pay that person, classify it as an AA, give them a little bit longer contract. Now, is that the right thing to do? I have questions about that, you know, people doing a job that someone else is doing and getting a little bit different pay, you know, for it. But I think people have been willing to accept those conditions just because of the training that they get and learning the position. So, and generally speaking, to do a good job as an AA, then you're very seriously looked at as an AP as those vacancies come available. So it's really been more of a function of budget or lack of, I think, than anything.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak or ask the superintendent a question? Ms. Round?
No.
Okay.
I'm getting ready.
Okay. We voted, that was, yeah. We're really doing public forum now.
Really are doing public forum now. So that means it's your time, Harper Smith. You've been very patient, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Harper Smith. I'm a sixth grader at West Valley Middle School. I am here to propose the idea of school uniforms. I believe the uniforms promote organization. Students spend a lot less time picking out an outfit because they know exactly what they're going to wear that day, so they'll spend more time sleeping as well. I attended two elementary schools and one of them is uniforms. I found that there it was easier for me to concentrate on my work rather than another student's brighter eye-catching clothing. It's also easier for teachers to notice violations. When teachers know exactly what the students have to wear, it's a lot easier for them to notice when they don't wear that thing because there's a lot less variety as well. A teacher I know who worked at both uniform and non-uniform schools comments, "Uniform policies are easier to enforce, leaving more time for instruction and meaningful interaction with students." At my school, I have occasionally noticed students left out of an activity or teased for their clothing choice. Uniforms would stop this kind of behavior because everybody's wearing relatively the same type of clothing, so in theory, that behavior would be inaccurate. I understand that parents would have to purchase these items, but in the long run, it's actually cheaper for parents to buy the uniforms instead of the regular clothing and parents already buy clothing for their children at the beginning of the school year. Now, this uniform would entail a solid-colored polo t-shirt, khaki or navy shorts, skirt or pants, a polo dress, or antenna shoes for safety reasons. What I'm wearing today would be a good example of a school uniform. As for jackets, students can wear a gray, navy, or white sweater pullover and during the colder months, the bulkier winter jackets would be stored in their lockers upon arrival. I believe that Fridays should be a spirit day. It allows students to wear their, wear their clothing that supports their school. Now, and, sorry, and it would also increase the purchase of these items so the students can wear something that's more casual on Fridays. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, our next speaker is Zimbabwe Matavu. Great job, Harper, by the way. Great job, Harper, by the way.
Zimbabwe Matavau, eighteen twenty-eight, McCall Avenue, Knoxville, three seven nine one four. The system of Jim Crow was imposed on African Americans by the state of Tennessee in eighteen For fifty-eight years, the black population of Knox County labored under this separate, but obviously unequal, process. In nineteen fifty-four, the United States Supreme Court, via Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka case, rendered unconstitutional that process, Plessy versus Ferguson system. This evening, sixty-three years after Topeka, utilizing with all deliberate speed as its guide, the Knox County Board of Education has been unable to deliver, to provide, or to usher in equal education to the African American population. Hence, I ask that the Knox County Board of Education authorize a referendum within the boundary of the first district, which will afford the voting public within said district the opportunity to choose or not a separate and independent school district with all responsibility and authority extended by the state of Tennessee. Further, I ask that a January two thousand eighteen special work session is convened to clarify and expand, if necessary, this proposal. Lastly, I ask that I am contacted by year's end as to your decision. I thank you.
Our next speaker is Candace Bannister.
Candace Bannister, Knox County resident. Good evening, Madam Chair and school board members. On December eighth, twenty sixteen, my son Will bought a dietary supplement from a friend at school. Another student saw it and reported him. My husband was called to pick him up. We were devastated to learn that Will had made this choice, and had quite a robust discussion at our house that night. At school the next day, I shared with my friends what Will had done. A colleague said that at her PBIS training during the summer, the presenter had said, "Everybody thinks the schools with the biggest drug problems are on the east side, but the biggest drug problem in Knox County Schools is at Farragut High School." Why am I finding out from a friend that my son's high school has the biggest drug problem in all of Knox County Schools? I have attended eleven parent night meetings and had never heard one word about drugs at Farragut. I heard all about college prep, honors, AP, and dual enrollment courses, the test for college credit, the average GPA and ACT scores at Farragut, the total scholarship money earned by the graduating class, please give to the FHS Foundation for Technology, on and on. All eleven meetings, the very same narrative, not one word about a drug problem at Farragut High School. Board policy states, "In order to establish an environment conducive to learning for each student, the board establishes the following goals: to provide for the safety, health, and welfare of students." How is it possible to think that you are providing for the safety, health, and welfare of the students at Farragut High School when you don't share information regarding being the biggest drug problem in the system with parents? On December twentieth, we convened for Will's disciplinary hearing. I shared with them my concerns about learning Farragut High School had the biggest drug problem in Knox County School, and I was told, "All high schools have drug problems." Will was suspended for ninety days. Whoops, no, let's make that a hundred, no sense having him back here the last ten days of school. We appealed. January seventeenth, we convened, convened for the appeal at the AJ Building. I again shared my concern over learning that my son's high school has the biggest drug problem in the system. The person presiding responded with, "Well, now, Ms. Bannister, I mean, that has long since been the case. What do you want us to do about it?" I was stunned. You know about a big drug, drug problem at my son's school, and you asked me what I want you to do about it? I was told we could discuss this after we conducted the hearing. At the conclusion of the meeting, I challenged the Farragut administration president with a question. How could they suspend my son for a hundred days for having a dietary supplement in a building with a drug culture that they chose to hide from parents? One administrator responded with a bit of a tirade. "I always tell my students and my parents about the dangers of drugs and alcohol. I warn my students and my parents." Everyone in the meeting was speechless. So to witness for ourselves exactly what this administrator says at the parent meeting, my husband and I attended her meeting this fall. She stammered at the end of the presentation that, um, uh, parents, uh, you, you should know that, um, your children might, um, experiment with, um, alcohol, drugs, and, uh, you know, the boy-girl thing, and, um, you know, just like your parents are gonna be driving thirty-five miles an hour down Kingston Pike when, um, they're sixteen. Quite a difference in the two performances. After Will died, I talked with an administrator at Farragut High School who told me he had never heard that Farragut High School had the biggest drug problem ever, and he had served in six different administrative positions across Knox County Schools. At the suicide prevention meeting on May sixth, this administrator said he had two big items to work on at Farragut High School, tardies and bomb threats. During the question and answer at the end of the meeting, he was asked, "What are you gonna do about the drug problem at Farragut High School?" He responded, "Just like with suicides, if the students know something, they gotta say something." Really? That's a plan? Every year, as a Knox County teacher, I'm asked to identify an area for refinement, and I must write down the actions that I will take to meet that goal, and must complete the actions to show growth in that area by the end of the year. If everyone in the AJ Building knows that Farragut High School has the biggest drug problem in the county, why isn't that information shared with the administration at Farragut High School? Why isn't it shared with parents? And why isn't this an area of refinement for Farragut High School? I was asked, "What do you want us to do about it?" Well, number one, identify the problem. Two, share pertinent information with stakeholders. Number three, make an action plan. Number four, get to work on the problem. Check your progress, readjust, and continue until you reach your goal. Instead of you kept your secret, Will attended Farragut High School where there is a pervasive and hidden drug culture. KCS failed my son and our family by purposely hiding a huge drug problem from stakeholders. I need to finish, please. Do I have permission?
How much, Madam Chair?
About fifteen seconds.
Okay.
Thank you. KCS failed my son and our family by purposely hiding a drug problem from stakeholders, by not even attempting to have a plan in place to deal with the issue, and in doing nothing, they failed to provide for the safety, health, and welfare of my son. My son did not survive Farragut High School. He took his life on April seventeenth as a sophomore. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Bannister.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board. Mark Bannister, Knox County resident, taxpayer, and registered voter. In light of the five-plus teen suicides in Knox County in twenty seventeen to date, the Knox County Schools Youth Risk Behavior Survey has received much attention, and it clearly indicates that the number of students attempting suicide is increasing significantly. The countywide percentage rising from six point two in twenty thirteen to an alarming eleven percent in twenty seventeen. Since three of these suicides occurred last spring at Farragut High School, I contacted the author of the report, an epidemiologist at the Knox County Health Department, to request the survey aggregated by school for the over fifteen hundred students participating. I was informed that the Health Department could not release that data in that format without the approval of the Knox County Schools coordinated school health director. My request to that individual has not yielded the data within thirty-three days, even though it was clearly framed as an open records request. The deputy law director has graciously offered his assistance in obtaining the school-specific data. Continually ignored open records requests to Knox County Schools certainly gives the appearance that they are trying to hide sensitive information. Tonight, however, I would like to focus on another youth risk behavior surveyed, namely the youth use of illegal drugs by high school students. Since the school-specific numbers are not yet available, I will limit my discussion to the countywide data. In twenty thirteen, twenty-three point three percent of surveyed high school students in Knox County responded that had used marijuana at least once in the past thirty days, but more significantly, twenty-two and a half percent of the students indicated they had been offered, given, or sold illegal drugs on school property during the past year. In twenty seventeen, these drug news numbers did not improve. A statistically equivalent twenty point seven percent of students used marijuana, and twenty-three percent had been offered, given, or sold drugs on school property. As my wife indicated earlier, at a disciplinary hearing in January for our son, it was mentioned, um, that the Farragut High School has the biggest drug county, uh, drug, drug problem in Knox County, and the disciplinary hearing authority replied, "Well, now, that's long been the case. What do you want us to do about it?" So I will now provide you a suggestion. If one takes the time to Google the words "school board, drug testing, parking permit", you will get a long list of school systems across the nation that have decided to take a proactive approach to the drug problem that's plaguing their schools and destroying the lives of students. There are school systems across the nation, including in Ohio, Wisconsin, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, I could continue. In particular, I would want to point out the comments of one particular school system, Howland School System in Ohio. They state about their drug testing program. "The purpose of the program is not to punish students, but rather to identify those that are at risk for drug addiction, provide students and their family the necessary support to overcome their dependency. The program is established to provide a means of deterrence to develop a truly drug-free school environment and undermine the effects of peer pressure, but providing a legitimate reason for students, students to refuse to use illegal drugs while encouraging students who do use drugs to participate in treatment." What about Tennessee? Tennessee Code Title forty-nine, Chapter six, Part forty-two, School Security Act of nineteen eighty-one, provides, "If a local education authority adopts a policy preventing, permitting random drug testing of students in voluntary extracurricular activities, then, prior to a student participating in an extracurricular activity, the LEA shall notify the parents and guardians of the students that the student may be subjected to random drug testing." Locally, in Blount County, both Maryville and Alcoa City Schools have adopted random drug testing programs for students who participate in T double S double A events and who park on campus. Anderson County Schools has extended their drug testing to include students who participate in all school-sponsored activities that are not considered part of the academic curriculum or school instructional day. It is past time for this Knox County Board of Education to exercise their state-given authority and implement random drug testing of high school students participating in extracurricular activities. And I would say that if cost is an objection, I know of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars a year that could be spent towards making a strong commitment to the health, safety, and welfare of Knox County students. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum. Move adjourn.
Ms. Roundtree made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Horn. All in favor say aye. Aye, this meeting's adjourned.